Let's get started again. I think we will pick up with Commissioner Wooster. You are going to speak to the addendum.
Actually, I was going to speak to the ordinance and the addendum.
Sure.
Because the two go together.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There continue to be three main reasons I'm not in favor of recommending this draft ordinance to the board. The first is the potential influx of growers attracted to the county if it's perceived as a regulation county, not a ban county. The last time around, in 2016 and 2017, every county surrounding Calaveras banned commercial grows. Last time around, we had the influx disaster. People came here. Much the same thing is true today as respects our neighbors. The information I have is that every county surrounding us, Amador, Alpine, San Joaquin, Stanislaw, and Tuolumne, ban outdoor commercial grows. Alpine, Amador, and Tuolumne don't allow any commercial growing at all. We would be the only county in the foothills around us to allow commercial grows and the only county of the six allowing outdoor commercial activity. So I'm afraid that the stage is set for another disaster. There's a lot more. Now there are a lot of cultivation sites that have been shut down or abandoned, but they're prepared. They got water, grading, leveled. That's likely to make the county an even more attractive place for would-be illegal growers. The draft ordinance would allow cultivation for recreational use, making a county even more of a magnet. Now the draft has been modified to accommodate a future potential expansion already signaled by the board to allow dispensaries to sell, not just medical marijuana, but also recreational. This would be done through amendments to Chapter 17.91, the dispensary ordinance. Violation of this ordinance would be an infraction, not a misdemeanor, as was the case before. I understand the reasons for this, and I understand that the penalties are more strict and harsher, but the potential for misperception on the part of people outside the county is still there. The sheriff spoke to us at length. He confirmed that as a result of the previous growing, there are a lot of sites already available. There is activity on social media identifying counties like Calaveras that have signaled they will allow it. Social media will advertise this county as a place to go to. If this draft ordinance is enacted, he would expect a lot of employees coming in, and people who want to grow illegally will come as well. They will be coming, in his words, "to hide in plain sight." It will enhance the problem of illegal grows. The sheriff also advised that marijuana is not the same as any other agricultural product. It brings violent crime. There are lots of complaints about odor. We don't get that with other ag. There's such a black market here. He doesn't expect a downturn in activity anytime soon. With marijuana selling at $800 a pound here and $5,000 in Florida, people will come.
Commissioner Wooster, can you pull your mic a little closer? Hard time hearing you.
And, you know, the illegality isn't confined to the high number from out of the county. Quite a few residents approved under the urgency ordinance and registered still continued to grow after it was illegal. The sheriff is the chief law enforcement officer in this county. He was elected by voters across the entire county, not just one district. I think his views are entitled to great weight. I asked the question at the first meeting here, what information is out there to show that there will not be another influx disaster? And after I expressed that concern at the first meeting on August 22nd, there were public comments. One response was, "An influx is for the county to deal with." That's correct, and the way to do that is to keep the ban in place and head off the influx. No one suggested my concern was unfounded, not to worry, it won't happen, let alone explain why it won't happen. I just think that whatever benefits people may see coming out of this regulation, the risk of another disaster, and no one is denying that risk exists, makes it not worth it. And if you are dealing with people who are going to come in and grow illegally, such as these illegals, it doesn't matter how well or how strict or how harsh the regulation is, they're not going to follow it anyway. So no matter how we try to write this thing, we got the problem. The second reason is the tax refund litigation with cases pending in Superior Court and the Court of Appeal. They used challenge the collection of the major taxes. I don't suggest that any of these cases has any merit whatsoever, but I do think the county should hold off on any regulation until these cases are over with, so we know where we are. The third is whether the county should be doing an EIR as to this proposed regulation. I'm not a sequel expert, and I don't express any legal opinion as to this. At the last meeting on August 27th, or at the meeting on August 27th, I raised as an issue the fact that the final EIR considered the ban to be the environmentally superior alternative, and the board certified the EIR and adopted the ban. It didn't make sense to me then, and it does it now, to use the same EIR that was certified in connection with the ban as the environmentally superior alternative to support doing something Passing that, going off the staff report, once an EIR is certified for a project, the county doesn't need to do another EIR unless there are either substantial changes in the project or with respect to the circumstances under which the project was undertaken with new or more severe environmental effects in either case. The addendum does identify a change in the project from 22,000 square feet maximum outdoor grow canopy, that's under the previously proposed ordinance, to 43,560.
Excuse me, did that being recorded? I'm not here. So your whole speech that you just made has not been recorded. Audio taped?
It's being recorded. It's just not.
There's no audio. People can't hear. We got a call from someone on the outside that was feeling it.
And we can't hear enough. See it? The only thing that we. Video's stopping. We need to try to start that, but I don't know why it's letting stop working. My stuff is still working. I'm still doing audio here.
It's recording now?
Yes. And it will be available both on YouTube and we will give a copy of the file.
I just got one from Hawaii that said there was someone's watching it, and they said there's no audio.
Okay, and honestly, there's nothing to do about that right at this point.
Okay, next.
But it will be available, so don't worry. I've got it all. In two formats, by the way. I have a backup.
Okay, I'll continue. The addendum says that 73% of the previously licensed cultivators used mixed light, and that's unlikely to change. And even if they all went to outdoor cultivation, the total canopy area would be less than 50% of the potential canopy analyzed in the EIR, which was 750 sites. The addendum is mathematically correct. 190 grows or even 200 grows of one acre of canopy is less canopy than 50% of 750 grows, which is about 375 acres. But for the most part, the EIR didn't focus on total canopy allowed. At least in some instances, the limitation to 22,000 square feet per site did make a difference, regardless of the total acreage allowed to grow under the project then. As to noise, the draft environmental impact report states, "Given that the planning area would not exceed 22,000 square feet, at the largest grow sites, the use of large tractors is not anticipated." That's at page 3.7-8. As to biological resources, the draft environmental impact report points out that although the ordinance would require fencing grow sites, which could restrict wildlife movement in the area, the fencing would be up to one half acre per site and would not preclude the movement of wildlife through the area. Page 4-4. As to odors, the draft report at Impact 3.2-4 says, "The larger the size of canopy area, the greater the potential for odor to be evident to off-site receptors." As to hydrology and water quality, the draft report estimated the operation of mixed light and outdoor cultivation sites could require up to 390,000 gallons of water per one-half acre per year. CCWD commented that with a cap of 22,000 square feet per site and up to 375 acres and 750 sites permitted, this doesn't seem to be particularly impactful on a grand scale of the entire county footprint, but on a small geographic scale, there could be significant hazards in relation to local hydrology. That's in the FEIR, page 2-29. And while CCWD said it agreed with the finding that groundwater supply impacts could potentially be significant, it wrote, "However, given the size of the proposed project and the cap on outdoor grows at 22,000 square feet per permitted site, the impacts of total water use may not be very big at all for the typical permitted grow site." But what happens to these issues if the project doubles the size of the grow? We don't know that because there's no DEIR to cover it. And it may not be a valid assumption that the method of cultivation is unlikely to change from 73% mixed light, so the potential increase in cultivation area per site would be minimal. If someone was set up for an outdoor cultivation, the area is graded, leveled, water's available, why not go for an acre? And if it was mixed light before, maybe now an acre outdoors makes sense. Another change in the project, which was done at the last meeting, is to change the annual well water tests from five years, which is what it was, to three years. The addendum recognized the five-year period as the EIR mitigation, and then says a modified version has been incorporated in the ordinance. Apparently, the modification is to go to three years, a definite change in the project such that the EIR doesn't support the ordinance. The addendum doesn't identify any change in the circumstances under which the project is undertaken. I think there have been. As the September 6 staff report points out, the baseline was set as April 5, 2016. Cannabis cultivation was illegal then as it is now, and that is correct, but that's not the problem. The draft environmental impact report pointed out that the existing environmental conditions included the existing cultivation sites in some stage of development, which the county could determine because of the application process under the urgency ordinance. So it took as the baseline the then-existing proliferation of illegal cultivation sites. And this comes up several times in a draft environmental impact report. As to aesthetics, Impact 3.1-1, cannabis activities were occurring prior to and under the urgency ordinance. Regulation is anticipated to reduce visual effects of cultivation when compared to those Impact 3.1-2, bringing baseline legacy cultivation operations into compliance would help attenuate environmental effects from existing cultivation activities. Hydrology and water quality, Impact 3.5-1, the construction water quality impacts, the ordinance is intended to bring unregulated illegal operations into compliance. Impact 3.5-2, operation water quality impacts. It discusses the risks of cannabis operations without a permit affecting water quality. Land use and planting, Impact 3.6-1, the ordinance will reduce conditions that create public nuisances. Population and housing, Impact 3.2-3.8-1, it writes of numerous reports of employees residing on grow sites illegally, without proper housing, and with the ordinance, the county could better control seasonal housing. The point is, the conditions on the ground environmentally were a mess with all of the illegal, unregulated grows, and the EIR recognized that as the baseline and compared the impact of the proposed regulation to that baseline. Now the county has over three years of enforcement activities, both under the urgency ordinance and the ban. The numbers of abatements done through code compliance citations add up to at least 401. They gave us the figures by years. Code compliance jointly with the sheriff in 2019 abated 50 more. And code compliance advised that a fair amount of grows were voluntarily abandoned without citation. The sheriff gave his figures for eradication of sites by year. They add up to 191. The total, 191 sheriff, 50 joint, 401 code compliance, that's 642 sites. So I think an EIR is in order to compare the effects of this proposed ordinance, adding nearly 200 cultivation sites against the vastly different baseline that exists now, with at least 640 sites eradicated, more abandoned voluntarily, as opposed to the rampant illegal growing taking place in April of 2016. So I think a new or supplemental EIR is in order, but I would not recommend this ordinance at all, and I would leave the ban in place for reasons I've stated.
I'm not going to go over a lot of what we just heard because I agree with everything I just heard, but I do want to emphasize a few things. Again, the sheriff made it very clear that with regulation will come illegal activity. Under the ban, they've been able to eradicate far more illegal sites because they're easier to find. All sites are illegal. We were told last time they were working on regulation, and this time that we need regulation in order to take care of the illegal grows. But again, we heard from the sheriff that's not the case. It's just the opposite. We increase the number of illegal grows when we do regulation. My concern is that I know that a lot of this is driven because there's some in the county that want the tax money. We're putting profit over the environment. We're putting profit over public safety as a county. We're putting profit over the health and well-being of our children and our youth. Nobody likes to talk about that. We try to bring it up, but some of the most solid research has shown the effect that marijuana has on the developing brain. It's not junk science. It's been proven. You can laugh all you want. It's been proven. It reduces the size of the adolescent brain, and it does not recover. And that effect is up until 25 years of age. Once your brain has stopped developing, after that, there is no effect. You wonder why I'm concerned. When I see growers that say that they are legitimate, caring growers, and they laugh when you bring up the effect on children, that concerns me. We're putting public profit over the quality of life in the county. Many people move to this county because they like the wide-open spaces, they like the fresh air, they like the rural lifestyle. But we don't seem to care about the fresh air anymore, as long as we can get tax money. Almost every commissioner here kind of stated that they don't want it next to them. But some commissioners just say they don't want it next to them, but they didn't mind putting regulation in effect and put it next to me. Well, if you don't want it next to you, you shouldn't want it next to anybody. I don't want it next to me. I don't think it should be next to anybody. It stinks. 75 feet is not going to take care of that. We're going to have lots of complaints about odor, especially because now you're doubling the size of the grow from a half acre to an acre. You're doubling the odor. Now you also want to cluster grows. Every 20 acres, you could have an acre grow. You put five acres of grow, how much more have you increased the smell? And it travels, when you increase that much, it travels for miles in a mild wind. So those are my concerns. The only regulation we should be considering is regulating personal grows. We have no choice on that because the state says that we have to allow that. And it's, so we can't stop that, but we can regulate that. And that's the only thing we should be looking at, is regulating that. And going back to the issue of public safety, a thing that also concerns me is that now we're talking about adult use, recreational use. Marijuana is an intoxicant, and I don't like being on the roads with intoxicated drivers. My wife and I went to Taco Bell one night to have dinner, and sitting in a car were two people smoking pot. Believe me, I know what it is. I used to smoke it when I was younger. One of them got out of that car, got into another car, they both drove away. I have to go out on the same road that they're driving on. And I don't know how we address that, but we're going to increase that. There was one time, it was suggested if we get the grows going again, that we could have tours. People can do, like they have wine tasting, we can have cannabis tasting in the county. I don't like the idea of wine tasting either. I don't like people intoxicated on the roads when I'm on the roads. I certainly don't want to add to that. So we got, this doesn't take into consideration public safety. Also, I also agree that the lawsuits against the county should be settled. We can say, yeah, we don't think they're going to, you know, they have a chance, but we should find out first because we don't know what's going to happen with the tax money. The other concern I have is that we don't know what all the costs are going to be to the county. We don't know if all those, we claim they're going to be recovered. We don't even know if they recovered last time around. People have asked for that accounting. It's never been given. Nobody can, really seemed to know where all that money went, what it was spent on. It seems like it was deliberately flushed away. And that concerns me when the public asks for information, they're told they can't have that information. Public was, they asked for information on how many sites are available for grows to be on, based on what we're looking at. They're told that information's not available. Well, when regulations came up before, and I remember one of the supervisors, he wanted to limit it to 50, and they said, well, you can't put a number on it on a limit. So he says, well, let's take a look at the acreage size. If we put it at this acreage, how many lots are available? They were able to go into a back room and have that answer within a half an hour. How can you tell the public that information is not available and they don't deserve it? This has been rushed. It's being shoved on us. The fact that we're trying to do an addendum to the EIR when it clearly is a new project and not doing at least a supplemental EIR, why are we rushing this? We were told that this should not be rushed. This didn't come from me. It didn't come from Commissioner Wooster. This came from Peter. You said in the, when we had the study session, you said this should not be rushed. We need to take our time and make sure we do it right. But all of a sudden, we're like being pushed to meet these deadlines, to the point where we try to limit public input. That bothers me as a commissioner. When we did the, when they were going through the general plan, we discussed one section, had additional public comment for the next section. No question about it. Five minutes a person. Nobody concerned about how long that public comment was going to take. Here, we discuss one section, we want to move on to another because there's two things we're supposed to vote on here. We had to fight for the public to get their opportunity to make comment. Something is not right. We need to slow down, take our time with this, and make sure it's done right. As it stands right now, I could not vote for the regulations that we have because I think it's, again, it's opening the county up for another disaster. We claim that it's being capped at a certain number of grows, but you guarantee that's going to be challenged. And when it's challenged, we don't know that supervisor, oh, well, it's not fair that we only hold it to people that were growing before, so now we need to open up to people that have property that qualifies. So we really don't know the number of grows we're going to wind up with. But what we do know is even at 190, the sheriff's department said, anything more than 50, and you make it easy for the illegal grows to hide amongst them. There are a lot of concerns that I have with this. So, no, I will not be voting for the regulation, and I will not be approving the addendum. I think that we need to do at least a supplemental EIR to do this properly.
I believe the purpose of this ordinance is to regulate commercial growing operations. We can't be proactive. We have to be reactive. This is not an issue that's going to go away. It is getting worse. As time goes on, more and more people use cannabis. As time goes on, more and more people use cannabis. The laws are changing, we have to get in front of this. We can't be an ostrich putting our heads in the sand. We have to get a grasp on this. This may not be a perfect ordinance, but at least we gotta get in front of this to control the illegal grows. If we allow, on the path that we are taking right now with the ban, there are grows up in these hills right now. There are legal operations up there now. By at least putting ordinance in place and strongly regulating the industry, we can control what elements are growing the cannabis in our county. Do I think cannabis is a gateway drug? Yes. Do I think children should be doing it? No. But also, alcohol and tobacco is a gateway drug. Them industries are both heavily regulated and watched. I think it's easier for children, school-aged children, to purchase marijuana than it is for them to buy alcohol or tobacco. This is a, it's a difficult thing. I have school-aged children. Yes, have I smoked marijuana in the past? Yes, when I was a youth. Do I do it now? No. Am I gonna do it? No. But if adult, responsible adults want to partake into it, who am I to stop them? It's no different me imposing what somebody should be able to drink. They wanna drink alcohol, so I'm not, if they're responsible, I have no issue with that. I do agree with Tim. I don't like seeing it, people driving down roads, smoking it. I don't like seeing people getting cars after drinking wine or at a bar, driving down roads, because I gotta be on the roads as well. But that is for the law enforcement to control. But I think that if we regulate this and do it correctly, we can reduce the environmental damage that is caused right now currently. Out in public, if people are regulated, they don't have to hide, they don't have to dump stuff, they can dispose of the fertilizers and whatever waste legally and appropriately. So I do recommend this ordinance. And the EIR, sorry.
Well, I'd first wanna state my appreciation for everybody who's spent the time here. No, I really do. Because I think it's beneficial for the commission to hear what you people have to say, and it's beneficial just to know that the community's watching. And I tried to add to that procedure by having my handouts made available to the public before each hearing, which was something that's not required, but that way you could take a look at. The illegal grows are a scourge on the county. There's no question about that. And just from my experience of the people who had their permits denied, I know the type of environmental violations that can happen on unregulated or on grows that are not following the law. And it's awful. It's absolutely terrible. Now, the, and I hope that one way or another, we can cut those down, cut down the illegal grows, or eradicate them. But it is important to note that the EIR, when it said that the ban was the environmentally superior alternative, also made it clear that it was based on an assumption of compliance with the law. That there would not be illegal grows. It was just an assumption, I'm not criticizing the drafters of the EIR, it was, that was the job they were given to do. Well, if we're gonna look to conditions on the ground, we know that under the ban of the last couple of years, the assumption is factually baseless. There are illegal grows in a situation where there is a ban. The county isn't wealthy, and I know this sometimes sounds like the old refrain, but Measure C does provide a source of income to the county. It goes into the general fund, and then it's up to the Board of Supervisors to decide how it's to be dispersed. But you can guarantee that if this ordinance is passed, why some measures, the Measure C money will come in, and at least some of that, in fact, a healthy proportion of that will go to the sheriff. The sheriff recognized that he would be, he'd be quite happy if there was a sudden resurgence of money into the Measure C coffers. Because, as he noted, the Board of Supervisors has recognized that the use of that money for enforcement against the illegal grows is a very positive use for that money. So there are illegal grows. And then there are grows that are consistent with our law. And our law, I mean, this law will bring more farms to the county. It's what they're farming is what causes the issue. But by itself, these farms will be subject to more environmental scrutiny and enforcement than other farms. I mean, we've heard, we're not imposing greenhouse gas reduction requirements on wineries. And so the farms that will conform to this law will be environmentally sound agricultural, I guess we can't say agricultural, but businesses out there in the, on the ground. And I, from District Two, and I'm, I was aware during the time of the urgency ordinance that there were some benefits. And one of those was there was an influx of young families to this county. And this is something that we've been trying to achieve in Calaveras County for years. I mean, if you just look in the abstract, this brings more commerce and more people, more families to the county. It also provides a means for recovery from the disaster of the Butte Fire that we had several years ago. One thing I think I am quite thankful for, it's not just the county that's regulating these farms and helping to control the environment. The state has a very active hand in it, particularly the Water Board. It is, I find it that the water, without the Water Board enforcement, I would be much more nervous about the effect on the environment of these farms, but they're, the Water Board keeps a very well-regulated watch on this. So with the influx of young families, I've seen that some of the struggling schools in District Two in particular were helped considerably to stay open. So I think I think that the county can deal with the ban, excuse me, we've dealt with the ban, can deal with regulation, you got me. And that I'm prepared to vote for the ordinance as we have amended it. And as far as the EIR goes, I would ask legal counsel if she believes that it's appropriate for us to proceed on the basis of the addendum without any further EIR activity.
Yes, it's the opinion of my office, as well as that of outside counsel with whom we've been working closely, that the existing EIR plus the addendum are adequate.
With the addendum?
Yes.
We couldn't understand, I couldn't understand what you said, sorry.
I'm sorry. It is, I just said that it's the opinion of my office, as well as that of outside counsel, that the existing EIR and addendum are adequate.
Well, I think the addendum makes a good point, and I'm not gonna belabor, that the project that was proposed in the EIR was gonna be more burdensome on the environment than the proposal that was presented to us. And I believe that the proposal, as we have amended it, is, assists in helping the environment. And so I think it's more environmentally friendly than it was when it came to us. And so I, for the reasons given in the addendum, I feel there's no reason to reopen the EIR proceedings, and I will be voting for the regulation.
So I wanna appreciate my commissioners who sat here for a long time, and many members of the public who've spent a lot of time here with us. And I understand that everyone feels strongly that they understand the issues, and that it seems obvious to them that one path or another is the right path. For me, the path is always gray and winding, and there's lots that was, that were said by the various commissioners and the public today that I agree with. In the end, the Board of Supervisors asked the Planning Commission to weigh in on a draft ordinance. So our job is to look at that ordinance and try to balance the interests of the various members of our community. So that if an ordinance is enacted, we are at least providing our best recommendations to the board. Given that I've been here since 1979, and I initially moved to Mountain Ranch, I am well aware of the history of cannabis in this county. It has been here as long as I can remember, and I'm sure there's many people who've lived here longer and know more about it. It's always had its problems with enforcement, but I think that the future is staring us in the face, and I agree with Commissioner Henderson that it's not likely we are going to be able to go back in time to some period when the cannabis growers weren't here. I think our only chance of having an orderly industry is to regulate it and to get out ahead of it if we can. The urgency ordinance, in hindsight, could have been done much better for everybody. I'm sure that, that there are many people who could have been protected better by a different ordinance, and there are many growers who could have benefited by a different ordinance. But that's all behind us now, and we can hope to have learned our lesson and to come up with a better ordinance this time. I spent a lot of time yesterday reading through both the ordinance and through the previous environmental documents, both the draft and final EIR, and looking at everything before us. And I am comfortable in recommending to the, that this move forward to the Board of Supervisors, and that the EIR and the addendum have adequately addressed the environmental issues. Do I wish there was a solution that could make everyone happy? Yeah, of course. That's my personality. I wish I could find that place. And I know no one is gonna be completely happy with anything that happens here today. But I'm ready to move this over to the Board of Supervisors, who are the final decision-makers and who are the elected representatives. So I don't think anyone needs to hear any more from me.
Well, I suppose I can say a few more things.
Sure, go ahead.
This, the comparison to alcohol and tobacco comes up more than once, and the huge difference is that marijuana is basically, other than the medical stuff up till now, a black market. It's not like tobacco and alcohol. Mostly, it's a black market, that's what the sheriff is saying. The issue of the illegal grows, and right now, they're all illegal, is being taken care of. I think the sheriff said they were taking care of four to six a week, and the number keeps growing. And there are illegal grows with the ban. We all know that, that's what's being eradicated. And the ban's been in effect, what, a little over a year? I think it ought to be given more of a chance to work. With respect to the comment that we, you know, that the previous regime allowed for an influx of young families, which is beneficial to the county, the way this is set up, it's only the people who held permits before that are gonna be able to apply for a permit now. There's not gonna be another influx of nice young families coming in this county. With respect to the opinions of council, I'm not sure that outside council have had the benefit of hearing all of the facts and information that came out at this hearing. And perhaps they would wanna take another look at this. What I didn't hear from anybody is an answer to my first and major point, which is, what about the risk of another influx of illegal growers? Nobody has told me not to worry. There won't be one, and here's why. And that was my biggest concern, and it has gone unanswered. That's all I have to say.
Just a couple additional comments. One, it's been brought up several times, when the EIR said the ban was a superior way to go, that it counted on a hundred percent compliance. But we don't hear is that the EIR considers that all the options that are presented are gonna be, have one hundred percent compliance, not just the ban. We keep hearing that over and over about the ban, but the EIR, even what we're looking at today, regulations, is considering that there's gonna be one hundred percent compliance. And from what the sheriff's department told us, there is not going to be. There wasn't in the past, there's not gonna be in the future. There wasn't in the past, there's not going to be in the future. The other thing about, well, we've got all these state regulations now, and the state's going to come in, and they're going to make sure these are being followed. The state made it clear, do not expect us to come and help. We do not have the manpower, we do not have the money. That was made clear to members of the county staff at a meeting in the early summer from the Board of Cannabis Control. Don't count on us, you have to do this yourself. So you got to take that off the table. As far as all the comments about what regulation is going to take care of the illegal grows, we keep coming back to that, but that's the exact opposite of what the Sheriff's Department told us. Sheriff's Department did not confirm that, he said, no, with regulation, you will get an influx of illegal grows. So we have not helped with that situation at all. And yes, we can recommend to the Board of Supervisors that we want them just to regulate personal grows, and we want them to keep the ban in place and give it a chance to continue working. It is working. You're reading every single week in the papers about the eradication of illegal grows. That means it's working. There are a lot more articles on eradication of illegal grows than there was before we had a ban. Hardly read any. That's because it's working. So just want those facts put out there, the decision we're making is not going to, is not going to take care of the illegal grows. The illegal grows are being taken care of much better under a ban.
I have no further comment.
Nor I.
Nor I. I don't believe that anyone believes that simply regulating will eliminate all illegal grows. I think that an aggressive enforcement program will certainly be necessary. Peter, you need a recommendation, how do you want to handle this?
Well, a motion to adopt the, we need a motion to either adopt or reject the resolution, or amendment to the resolution.
All two.
That would be attachment one of the initial staff report from August 22nd, I believe.
2019-024.
Yes.
It's all one.
It's a single, single resolution, yes.
Do we have a motion?
I saw a move. Second.
I'm going to do us one at a time. Commissioner Booster?
Are we having a vote?
Yes.
We just had a motion and a second.
Well, my vote's no.
Commissioner Fiorino?
No.
Yes.
Aye.
Passes on a 3-2 vote, with Commissioner Booster and Fiorino opposed. And I believe we are adjourned.
Well, I would like to ask something. Is there a chance that, I know there isn't the time, the time schedule set by the Board of Supervisors for us to once again meet and look at the once again revised draft, is there a chance for you to send to the commissioners, when you have it prepared, the draft, and that we individually could just email you?
I would be happy to do that, if you identify something that I missed, as, for example, the striking medical, I overlooked that when I made the edits last time. By all means, please let me know, and I can let the board know that if there are changes that I missed, I can make that correction.
Well, what I'm wondering is if we could have a day or two before you submit it to the board, for us to look at it. I don't know what's your time.
Yeah. I'll be making the edits that were adopted today immediately, starting this afternoon, hopefully get them done by the end of this week, and I'll be preparing a packet for the board within the same timeframe. But the hearing is technically scheduled for October 1st, and so any corrections that you might have, I can certainly present to the board at that time.
Okay, so the answer is no, we don't get a crack at it?
There probably won't be like a window of, please review this before I get to the board, because of the timeframes I need to get, I'm already a week behind on meeting that normal deadline for boards to middle and packet.
Okay.
So, but by all means, if I've missed something, please send me a correction. Not a re-negotiate of an issue, but simply, you know, I missed one of the edits that we made, or, you know.
The word superfluous will not be in any email.
Thank you. Now, I believe we are adjourned.